Good evening, I'm Pauline E. from the council meeting to our.
Councilmember Elliott.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Fitz Henry.
Here.
Councilmember Sandahl.
Here.
Mayor Go tell.
Would everybody please join us up here with a pledge of allegiance and stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask the council approval of the minutes of the special concurrent city council and Richfield School Board work session of April 1st, 2013, the special concurrent city council and planning commission work session of April 9th, 2013, and the regular city council meeting of April 9th, 2013.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 We have a lot of presentations tonight, so I'm really excited. There's a lot of great things going on in the community. First, we have a presentation by Hennepin County Medical Center honoring firefighter and police responders that saved paramedic Wayne Schneider's life in December 2013, 2012.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. We're here tonight to responders that were involved in the call where Wayne Snyder suffered a cardiac arrest after going, after having a heart attack. We celebrate first responders a lot, but it's not just the first responders that really helped and saved this man's life. It was the police officers, the firefighters, his partner paramedic, the advanced technology that was able to provide mechanical CPR. It was the staff at Hennepin County Medical Center. It was the catheterization lab. During his cardiac arrest, he was in cardiac arrest for 68 minutes. And he's joined us here tonight, and he's 100% here. Actually, he's probably 110% here now. And we don't celebrate all of our successes, but we do celebrate the successes where, that are special to us. And this one's special to us because Wayne's one of us. Wayne's been a paramedic for Hennepin County for 23 years, and in those 23 years, he's responded to probably thousands of calls to help Richfield residents in their most dire moments. And we were just really fortunate and very happy that we were there in one of his most dire moments to help him out. I'm going to turn it over to Doug Gesmi, operations supervisor for Hennepin EMS.
Thank you, Wayne. Thank you for allowing me to be here. It's my privilege to come down and talk to you folks for a short amount of time. I'm not a big, big speech maker, so I do want to tie into what Wayne said. It is truly a team effort. Every call we go on involves everyone to participate. And one cog missing out of the wheel, it does not function as smoothly. And when Wayne suffered his cardiac arrest, clearly, all the cogs of the wheel were working together. And we wanted to show our respect and appreciation for our partners here in Richfield, from the Richfield Fire Department, Richfield Police Department, our gratitude and our thank you without their involvement, without the involvement of the whole team, as Wayne mentioned, from the start of the CPR through the cath lab, through the MICU. It's a huge effort, and everyone plays a vital part. So I'd like to present some combination awards, if I may. Wayne, you want to come up here first? Wayne Schneider, we're very happy Wayne is with us and pretty excited. So Wayne, do you want to say anything?
It's good to be alive.
If I may, I can present these combination plaques.
On behalf of Hennepin EMS, Hennepin County Medical Center, we present this plaque to the Richfield Fire Department. Wayne is also going to accept the plaque on behalf of the Richfield Police Department. I know the leadership is, a lot of leadership by the town at Chiefs Convention. Wayne is gracious enough to accept this plaque. So. Hey, I do have some individual combination letters, and Wayne is going to help me distribute those. I think it's only three. We do have three police officers that could not make it. I'll read their names and hand the plaques to Wayne. He was, Pete Heerich. Kevin Blanchard, officer with the Richfield Police Department. Pete Kinsey, officer with Richfield Police Department. And Orlando, the baller. On behalf of Hennepin EMS and HCMC, I want to thank you gentlemen for what you've done. You've helped us get our friend back, coworker, and our partner. We consider you folks our partners as well. So on behalf of my organization, we do thank you. Joe Alaska. Dave Quivado. Teen Task Force. And Chuck Russell. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. How'd you like to follow that? We're really glad you're here with us. Thank you. But next, we really have a, have a really exciting presentation, something that's equally as well important to everyone. This is a presentation regarding Relay for Life.
They can't hear you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing us to come to see you today. My name is Karen George, and I am volunteer for the American Cancer Society, and we represent the Richfield Bloomington Relay for Life. Along with me today, I have Joan Craft, and I have Jo, sorry, Grady, sorry. This year marks the 100-year anniversary for the American Cancer Society and the 29th anniversary for the Relay for Life. Relay for Life began in Tacoma, Washington, in 1985 by one man, Dr. Gordy Clatt, who walked around a track for 24 hours raising money for the American Cancer Society. This was the start of something real big. There are over 6,000 Relays for Life's in the United States, and we're also on every continent. Relay for Life has offered millions of people a chance to make a difference in the fight against cancer. On August 2nd, residents, organizations, and businesses will join together to fight back against cancer right here in Richfield by taking part in our 19th Annual Relay for Life. Our relay was formerly in Bloomington, but our track no longer has a track on it. It's filled with grass. So Richfield High School has welcomed us with open arms to participate there at the high school. Teams and participants and general public will take turns walking around the track all night as a symbol of the resolve to fight against cancer. This event, this event includes programs with a dove release, a silent auction, a victory lap around the track for cancer survivors. The highlight of the event is at dusk, when thousands of luminary bags are lit with candles in honor of cancer survivors or a memory of people who have lost their battle with cancer. During the night, there are games, food and activities for the walkers, and also a few door prizes. We will be having our kickoff meeting this coming Thursday, May 2nd, at South Town Lanes in Bloomington at 6:30 for anybody who wants to learn more information about Relay. And everyone is welcome also to attend Relay. Please come out and join us as we celebrate, remember, and fight back. See you on the track. And Joan also has some invitations for you.
Oh, wonderful.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you for coming. That was great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joan.
It's really nice. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Garcia, I believe you have the next presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a couple of guests with us from Hennepin County, and I'd like to invite them to come up. This is Don Saber and Charlene Shelton. They are going to tell us about South Suburban Hub, which will be located in, at Veep in Bloomington. And please note, you know, they will, they can come back and visit us and give us a more detailed presentation later on. But this is so very, very important to our community, and I think they're going to tell you why. And these are folks that have really worked hard to make this happen, to put it together, to implement it, and now they're here to promote it. So welcome, Don and Charlene.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. My name is Don Saber. I'm an area director with Hennepin County's Human Services and Public Health Department, and specifically, area director for regional development and workforce supports. So we are here tonight to give you an update on the South Suburban Hub development and answer any questions you might have. But first, a little background to kind of set the stage, and then a few details from, from Charlene. And also, two notes to self. One, don't follow first responders. The second is, prepare your material and larger font these days. So I'm going to try to make sure I hit the highlights here. In 2004, Hennepin County created a single entity from six departments, which had previously operated individually and apart from each other, various social services, financial assistance, and public health services. We began with a focus on integrating services in order to help individuals and families achieve outcomes related to safety, to stability, to self-reliance, and livable income. Having successfully reorganized into the one department, our work during 2006 and 2009 focused on specific redesign of our service areas and processes. Principal redesign projects involved our children's and adult services, and areas that we rethought how we might provide case management in a more integrated fashion. For these and other redesign initiatives, we used project management principles, data, and broad-based participation of our managers and staff. By 2009, we were firmly committed to redesigning how we deliver services and where we deliver them. The result, a new model of service delivery interconnected with an innovative plan, our innovative plan, to move into the community. A few major components of that new direction, an integrated and holistic service delivery model, providing those services at community-based regional sites, collaboration, partnership, and horizontal management and community engagement. We adopted a R O work environment. We designed our technology to more expediently and efficiently share information with one another. We're designing new flexible workspace to accommodate a more mobile workforce. So in brief, our new direction, working together to help individuals and families meet their needs by linking them to local resources and services, providing services where people live and work, broad assessment of their needs, integrated and holistic services involving people in decision-making and treating people with respect. Working together to help strengthen the neighborhoods and communities, we're building a cost-effective network of services. We're partnering with community members in decision-making. We're developing strengths, leveraging assets, increasing community capacity, and adapting to changing needs. So with that, I'd like to introduce Charlene Shelton, who will tell you a little bit about South Suburban.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here this evening. I am so pleased to be telling you about our new hub, which is scheduled to open September 9th of this year. We're going to be co-locating with a wonderful agency who invited us to share their building that they're remodeling, which will be quite beautiful. It is Volunteers Enlisted to Assist People is the name of the organization, commonly called Veep. And they provide a host of services, including a food shelf services and actually some social services as well. They are kindly sharing their building with us, and we're actually sharing many of our spaces within that building. So it should be very seamless for the clients that we each expect to be serving within that facility. The county is anticipating having about 132 staff working out of that facility on a regular basis and probably be more on a, on a, probably as needed basis. And we're going to, each, each agency is expecting to serve about 140 clients per day, so it should be a really busy office. The services we'll be providing, of course, we can't have all the services that our department provides located in one facility. So, but we will be providing access to all the services that we deliver there. And I did give you a handout to demonstrate that to you. So even though they might only receive initial contact and intake services, as well as some basic assessment services and processing for financial application services there, we'll have staff that can connect the clients to other services within our department, including WIC within the Bloomington Health Department that we're hoping to work with, and actually at our Eden Prairie facility, once that's remodeled, as an example. So they won't be located at the hub, but our staff will connect to them. In addition, we'll also be connecting to as many of the community providers that we can within the community that are human service, that are providing human services and public health services within the communities of Bloomington, Edina, Richfield, and actually Eden Prairie as well. Well, also, our catchment area will also include the clients living south of 50th Street in Minneapolis. So it's a pretty big area, and we're very excited to be having that open very soon. So I'll close with that unless you have any questions for us. And if not, maybe we can come back next time and give you a longer presentation if you'd like.
Yeah, it'd be really interesting, too, just, just so we could filter the information out to our broader community through our churches and other things. They would probably be very interested because they would be some of the people who might be your clients.
Wonderful. I'd love that. Thanks again for hosting us.
Well, in fact, this is, this is such a big help to, to the clients that you serve, which are our, you know, our residents and our neighbors. Because quite frankly, going downtown for these services is just a nightmare, especially when you've had to deal with the maze of, at Century Plaza. And this is going to be a big plus, not only for them, but for us, too, that we'll be able to serve our communities a lot better. And it's great that it's going to be, you know, that Veep is right there so that they won't have to make two stops. They can, they can arrange and do it all in one stop. And we appreciate, you know, the fact that, that you have come into our community to take care of business for our folks.
You are absolutely right. And our Northwest Hub, which we opened last October, really showed that. We had, we served 450 clients our first day. So clearly, they were very excited to be served in the, in the same community that they live and work, and we're excited to have this site open and have that available for the clients in this area. As you stated, it's much needed. Yes.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Saber.
Yes, I just, before they leave the podium, I, if you could just repeat again for, for folks exactly, what's the address exactly where that's going to be located at? Some people don't know where the Veep facility is going to be.
Sure. I'm sorry. I didn't say that. It's 9600 Aldrich in Bloomington.
9600 Aldrich.
It's, it's an old building that was purchased by Veep, but it's being completely remodeled on the inside and outside. So it should be, it's a one-story building, and Veep will, of course, occupy about two-thirds of that. The county will occupy the other portion, and will share many spaces within that, including our common lobby, and some of our same equipment. So it should be very exciting.
It's on a bus line, too.
It is on a bus line, and we're hoping to even get a stop nearby if we can, or closer than it is now.
And then one, one of the things I'd like to do is, is to get a summary from you folks of, you know, as concise as possible, what, you know, what services, what are the most frequently used services that will be at that facility? So we can put that up on our, on our cable television and our web, and our webpage, and so folks can have very easy access to that. So we can, we can stay in touch and put that together, hopefully sometime in the very near future.
And the handout I gave you this evening has that information, and I can get that to you electronically.
Wonderful.
Good.
Let me ask you, did, so Veep is closing the offices on James and Irving?
Yes, they will be.
So everything will be moving down there?
They're moving their entire, their entire operation to 9600 Aldrich.
Good.
They're actually going to be moving in earlier than we are. They're planning to occupy the building August 1st.
Okay.
And then we will be moving in a little bit later, September 9th.
Good. Thank you.
But we'll have a community open house, so we'll invite all of you, making sure you come if you can.
We'll look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation by the Richfield Fourth of July Committee. Thank you, folks, for coming.
Thank you for inviting us, Debbie. We really appreciate you guys listening to information about our event tonight. I am Katie Robinson. I'm the president of the Richfield Fourth of July Committee, and.
I'm Sarah Dackendorf. I am the secretary and button coordinator.
And she also did the design for the flyer that you can see up on the screen. We're here to talk about a fundraiser that we do for the Richfield Fourth of July Celebration. Our event costs about $100,000 each year to put on. So we've had to become creative in the ways that we fundraise. And this year is the Second Annual Richfield Fourth of July Beer Bust and Silent Auction. And the reason that we started doing this was because we would get contacted by a lot of local businesses that wanted to help but couldn't donate any money, or, you know, just write a check over to, to help, so they could donate products and services. And for the longest time, we didn't have anywhere to put those, those donations. So we decided to start this silent auction to bring funds in and also to provide a way to advertise those businesses that so generously donated. So the Second Annual Event for this will be again at Port Richards. It was there last year. They generously donate a space for us, and that is on the corner of Normadale and American Boulevard in Bloomington. And it's happening on Saturday, May 18th. The beer bust portion goes from 5:00 to 7:00, and there are pre-sale wristbands that you can get for $10 by emailing my, myself at kdr@richfieldfourthofjuly.com, or if you buy it at the door, it's $15. It's open to all ages. It's, it's family-friendly. From 5:00 to 10:00 is the silent auction. We will be having, this is new, we will be having an appearance by Ms. Richfield, 1981. And she will be meeting with people, signing autographs, taking pictures, and then we'll also be hosting the live auction portion of our event. We will also have Baker Square there selling pie as a way to kind of incorporate other local businesses. And it should be a really great time. Last year's event was a great success, and we already have about $5,000 retail in donations that have come in. So Sarah's going to read off a couple of the donations we've gotten so far.
A couple of the local ones are Chan Hessen Dinner Theaters, Dairy Queen, the Guthrie Theater, Minnesota Timberwolves, the Minnesota Vikings, Penn Auto Care, Radisson Blue Mall of America, the Richfield Ice Arena, and the Richfield Pool, Shane Company, and those are the big ones that we have so far.
And all of the donations, not only the places, but what we've also received, can be found on our website at www.richfieldfourthofjuly.com. And that's also where you can get a copy of our flyer and their links to all of the donors' websites.
So if there's a business that's listening or hears this tonight, they can still donate to you?
Yes, I will. We will accept donations up until 4:45 on May 18th. So. I will have blank bid sheets with me, so we'll fill them in if anyone wants to bring anything, and then we'll post them on the website after the event. So anybody who wants to come or donate or volunteer at it, feel free to contact us.
This is one of our greatest events here in the city, so I hope that a lot of people will come and participate. I know I plan on being there.
Well, we appreciate it. Thank you so much for letting us come today.
Thanks. Okay, yes, please pass out the flyers for us. Next, we have a presentation regarding the Unity in the Community event. That's May 16th, another great event coming up here.
Hello. Good evening.
Thank you.
I'd like to introduce Shelley Eller Turner. She's a Richfield resident and also a member of the Police Multicultural Advisory Committee and co-chair of the Unity in the Community event.
Thank you, Amy. Hello. Thank you for having me tonight. And I am here to invite you all to Unity in the Community. You and your families are invited to this great event. It's honoring and celebrating the cultural diversity in Richfield. It is May 16th, Thursday, May 16th, from 5:00 to 7:30 at Veterans Park. We would love to have you join us. There's, as, in your envelopes, you have a flyer, invitation, and a parking pass for Veterans Park area. And in our flyer, you can see there's going to be entertainment. We have four different dance groups, storytelling, henna, face painting, balloons, free snacks. It's a great time. So we hope to see you there.
And we hope for no snow.
No, no, no wind, no rain, yes. Spring weather.
Spring weather.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Amy, do you want to leave your phone number for in case people want more information?
There is an email. It's unityinthecommunityrichfield@hotmail.com if anyone is interested in participating or need more information. We're looking for members for the committee for next year, or any ideas for next year's event, or if they want to volunteer for next year's event. Unity in the Community Richfield at hotmail.com.
Good.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks. Next, we have the annual meeting with the Advisory Board of Health.
Hello. My name is Chris Olson, and along with Jennifer Turrentine, I, we are the co-chairs of the Richfield Advisory Board of Health. The Richfield Advisory Board of Health would like to thank the council for the opportunity to briefly discuss our activities over the last year. We would like to first introduce to our members who are present. We have Betsy Osborne, Jennifer Turrentine, Callie Dennis, Rose Jost, and Kirsten Johnson. Two, 2012 proved to be an exciting and productive year for the Richfield Advisory Board of Health, and our members have shown unprecedented enthusiasm and commitment to the advisory board and the health of our community. We succeeded in extending our reach into the community this past year by participating and in both organizing and supporting roles, a large number of healthy initiatives in Richfield. These do include the Community Wellness Expo, the Open Streets at Penfest, the Bike Task Force, the Yellow Ribbon Campaign, Do Town, Tri-City Partners, and SHIP, which is the acronym for statewide health improvement. and SHIP, which is the acronym for Statewide Health Improvement Program. We do want to acknowledge that we do not work in a vacuum. And we would like to recognize the City Council and Bloomington Public Health for their support and encouragement. And our city staff liaison, Betsy Osborne, who is our guardian angel, organizing force and steady hand. She deserves a special call-out for her dedication to our board. Just a few things to touch on was the Open Streets at Penn Fest. The advisory board played a role in organizing the first Open Streets at Penn Fest, which took place in September. Our goal in participating was to encourage all vendor participants to provide healthy snacks and activities for the residents the day of the event. For the Bike Task Force, our advisory board has committed a member to be active in building the bicycle-friendly Richfield. And in 2012, we committed a member to be part of the newly-formed Richfield Bike Advocates, who have a member on our city's transportation commission. One of the more important things, not that they're all important, but we are very involved in the statewide health improvement program, otherwise known as SHIP. And that has had a great impact in the city of Richfield. We have established a satellite farmer's market. Both farmers' markets now accept EBT and WIC payments. We established the establishment of new community gardens, the development of a city policy ensuring healthier snacks at city-operated concessions. We created a community food partnership with Bloomington and Edina to support environments in the three cities where healthy food is accessible to all. And we worked with Do Town for the passage of the Complete Streets policy. And as far as Do Town goes, we have been very supportive of Do Town and recognize that the citizen commitment is imperative to helping to create a healthier city of Richfield to live and work. So thank you very much for your time.
May I, Your Honor, thank you very much for your work? That's great. Thank you.
When you look at the breadth and the depth of all the things that they've done in a year's time, it's quite impressive. And this has always been a really hard-working committee. And I sit on that, and I always ask them for more. And they haven't kicked me out yet. So I want to thank you very much for working very hard. You make a huge impact on Richfield. I think that's why people know they can go to you and expect so much out of you, is because you deliver a really great package. Thank you for helping the community be healthier.
And it's always nice to have somebody like Betsy Osborne, who's, you know, a big help, not only, you know, to that particular commission, but to a lot of our residents in the city. And thank you too. I mean, you've done, Jennifer and Chris, great job.
I like the picture on the front. Whoever thought of that with the apples and putting the names on it? Of course, Jennifer, you're so clever. Thank you. Corinne, would you come around and join me over at the podium? Some of you may not know that Corinne Heine, this is her last city council meeting. Not our official duty, we don't let you go just yet. But soon, she will be leaving us for another city. We won't go unmentioned, but we will miss her, miss her terribly. She has kept us out of trouble. And Lord knows, we've needed it at times. She has taken on some very hard tasks over the years, several council members, a lot of changes here, a lot of changes in staff, and a lot of changes in mayors. And you've kept us pretty clean, kept our nose pretty clean. And we really appreciate that. And it's not an easy task through some of the things we've done. But you've been here a lot of years. How many years, Corinne?
I've been working on Richfield Matters for 28 years.
28 years, wow. Well, we want to thank you for all that. And I know that the staff specifically have spoken so highly of you and said how much they would miss you. And this council will also miss you very much for all the things you do for us. And that, we have appreciation of a gift that we would like to give you. It's a beautiful mantle clock, so you can put that into your new office here. And let me read what it says on it. It says, "Corinne Heine, in appreciation for your excellent service as Richfield City Attorney and for your dedication to our community since 1985. Presented to you April 23rd, 2013." About that for the new office.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
If you want to wrap that. So it keeps nice. Staff, want to say anything?
Yeah, I do, thank you. You know, I've been here for a little bit longer than Corinne has. And I appreciate all the times I've had the opportunity to work with Corinne. And Corinne has answered a lot of very difficult questions for me and kept me out of trouble many times, many times. And the other part of it is she got along so well with our staff. I mean, she fit right in to the staff here. And she was here on Wednesdays, which is our big meeting day here. And so everybody got to know Corinne very well. And we just had a great working relationship with her. The other part about it is, most people don't know this, but Corinne's an expert throughout the state of Minnesota on a number of matters. I know she teaches at the City Clerks Institute. And we're going to be able to call on you, Corinne, and get, still get, yeah. Like, nobody knows data privacy, data practices, matters like Corinne. Nobody in the state does. So thank you for all the time and effort you spent with us.
My mic's not on. I just want to thank everybody. This is, this is my home. Richfield is my home. I have been working with the staff here and with the public officials and coming to the council meetings and watching all of your residents come in for many, many years. And longer than I've lived in any particular place. And Richfield has my heart. You have some wonderful, dedicated people. I think for as many years as I've been on council, well, Steve's been here, Cheryl's been here, Mike Isling's been here. And the kind of dedication that you get from your staff speaks so well of the city. And I think for probably at least, what, 20 years? Sue, you'll correct me. There's been a Sandal sitting on the city council while I've been here.
28.
28. So the entire time I've been here. I mean, there's so much continuity here. And it just speaks so well of the entire community. Thank you very much.
You know, I met Corinne at law school, so I've known her longer than anybody else has. And it's, and, you know, she went on to finish law school. I stayed two years, and then I decided to seek other employment. But it's kind of like, you know, I started in the city council, I'm finishing in the city council, and it's been a great ride. Corinne, you have really done us proud all the way around. And we wish you the very best of luck. I know that the city you're going to is very fortunate. And let them know that, you know, that, you know, we're letting you go, but, you know, we, your hearts, our hearts are going with you too.
Thank you. Okay. It's hard to follow all these great presentations and everything like this, but we'll go to the council discussion. So Councilmember Elliott, I'll let you start.
So you're starting with me again, hoping I've come out of hibernation and depression. Well, I'm there. I can look out, and I can see the sun shining from here. And that's a wonderful feeling. The only thing I really want to talk about is there was talk with the Health Commission about the Open Streets and their participation. And we're starting to gear up for that again. We're only about, what, four and a half months away from that. The Penn Central website has all sorts of opportunities for people that want to participate and engage in planning the Second Annual Open Streets. Jim Toppets' offer for the city will be taking charge of a lot of it and directing a lot of it. And so I really encourage anybody that enjoyed what went on last year and would like to participate to talk to Mr. Toppets over. Check Penn Central. Or they can always call me, because I tell you, the more hands on deck, the better presentation and the more fun we're going to have this year. So I would invite everybody in the city. I mean, we've got Unity in the Community. We've got the 4th of July. And those are all wonderful events. And we're open to turn Open Street into an annual event that just accommodates those and just makes Richfield even more entertaining and presentable to the metro area at large.
There's a lot of metro people there, not just Richfield.
Yep, absolutely.
And if I can, just to put it on people's calendars now so they don't make a mistake and go out of town, it will be September 15th from 12:00 to 5:00 on Penn Avenue.
See, and it's always good to have a Sandal, because she's got that little Excelsior Day Planted that I always forget. So she's got the dates. I know approximately she knows when, so that works well for both of us.
Councilmember?
Well, I was just thinking, and I thought, you know, one of the things that we have in Richfield, we have Vets Park, and we have that beautiful memorial. And the other thing we have are two great veterans' service clubs. You know, we've got the American Legion Post 435. And they just, they do a fundraising breakfast. I believe it's during the winter, don't they?
Yep, starting in September again.
Right. And it's, I mean, I think there were over 200 people this last Sunday. And just, you know, a great place to, you know, break bread and see your friends, your neighbors. And the other organization is the VFW, the Four Fives. And we're very fortunate to have them too. If people don't know, you know, you can always, if you want to hold a meeting at one of these service clubs, you can always do that. They serve great meals. And I know that the Four Fives has a terrific liver and onions. So that's my plug.
Not everybody's going to run down there for that one.
I know it.
That's a little bit old-school, liver and onions. Back a while.
You know, this is...
I like it too. I mean, I'm dating myself.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Sandal.
Thank you, Your Honor. I brought this up once before, but I'm just going to remind people, because it's coming up this weekend on Sunday, excuse me. Did I get the date wrong? It is Sunday, Sunday, April 28th. Peter Aronstein will do a piano recital at St. Richards. It's, I believe it's a donation. People can donate what they wish. He performed last year, and he was just amazing. He was so much fun. He interacted with the audience. So it's a good time. And if you have an interest in piano music or want an excuse to get outside in the evening, come on over. We have a great facility there on...
What's the time?
7:00 on Sunday.
St. Richards. Councilmember?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Got some good news to report. The Beyond the Yellow Ribbon did a very good deed this weekend. We received a panic call from American Legion Coordinator for Veterans. And he had a hard time finding people that could do, move a veteran. And he looked at our website, called me, and we were able to get by Saturday six people to help move a veteran. Granted, it was in the city of Edina by one block, but Edina didn't have their system together yet. But it worked out very well. I put the call out. We ended up with six people. What it was is this gentleman was at the Heritage of Edina, because he recently received a traumatic brain injury. And he has no more relatives in town, even though he used to live here. And his daughter lived in Chippewa Falls. And not having anybody to help, she was in a panic trying to figure out how they're going to move his furniture out since he got moved to the VA Center near Chippewa Falls. So she put the call out, and I put a little message out. And we ended up with six people helping, got it done in two hours. And we were able to clear the apartment out for the next resident there. But she was so happy, and she had no idea about Beyond the Yellow Ribbon. And it really hasn't hit Wisconsin yet. It's a Minnesota grown-type thing. But everybody that worked it almost was in tears when she thanked us, because we thought, well, we're not sure how this is going to go. But she was so appreciative, because we were her last hope to move all this. So I want to say thumbs up to Yellow Ribbon and thanks to the people that helped us weekend.
We can cross borders and help people.
We can.
We're all friends here. Well, we had a special study session. And I just want to say that it's very encouraging to see, you know, we keep talking about how do we promote Richfield better and about our location. And I just, I want to hold up my shirt here that they showed us, this is the logo. This is the logo of the Minnesota Magicians, okay? They are looking at making a new home in the Richfield Ice Arena. And we couldn't be more pleased to have the hockey team here come join us. So we've always been a great town for sports. We love it, and we love to support our kids and even our adult sports. So I'm looking forward. We're moving forward with a few renovations we might need to do and some updates to make all this happen. But I think you'll see, you'll see a new entertainment venue coming here to town. And I think it's a great move. Thank you for the city staff who've worked so hard to bring this to us. Council approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
The consent calendar, City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The consent calendar contains several separate items, which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. And once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions will also have been approved, and no further council action on those items will be necessary. Tonight, we only have about a half a dozen or so items on the consent calendar, starting off with item A. Consideration of approval of continuing the public hearing to consider plat approval of 6330, 6400, and 6430 Lindell Avenue to May 28th, 2013. Now, that's the former Lindell Garden and adjacent property to the north. Item B is consideration of approval of a joint powers agreement between the city of Richfield and the city of Edina for building and plumbing inspection services. Item C is consideration of approval of the first reading of the Charter Commission recommendations to amend several sections of the Richfield City Charter and scheduling the public hearing and second reading for May 28th, 2013. Item D is consideration of approval of a resolution authorizing the agreement for the purchase of a property located at 6301 Bloomington Avenue for the Taft Park-Richfield Parkway Connection Project. Item E is consideration of approval of the revisions to the West Connection and East Connection bicycle route plans as recommended by the Transportation Commission. And finally, item F is consideration of approval of the rejection of all bids submitted for the renovation of Fire Station 2. And that would conclude tonight's consent calendar.
I'll move the calendar.
Second.
Could we, City Manager, would you just take a few minutes to explain why number F was on, is put on there, why we're looking at the rejection of all the bids?
Absolutely, Mayor, members of the council. When we put this project idea out and the project budget, we were looking at roughly about a $900,000 project. And when the bids came in, they came in about $300,000 over. Now, you know, when a project comes in $300,000 over, and we haven't even gotten into the project, you know, typically, you have a project budget or you have a basic bid for a project. And invariably, as you go along, there are other items that you find as you go. And so when you're talking about something as significant as $300,000, I thought it would be most appropriate to go back, take a look at, not just looking at some basic value engineering, let's take a look from the beginning at the project and find out what are some of the alternatives we could take a look at to decide whether or not we want a fire station there that's going to be more in the range of $900,000 or so to $1 million or something as high as 1.2. And what I hope then is to bring this back to the city council[1696.28] And what I hope then is to bring this back to the City Council, so the City Council can take a look and take a look at some of the more expensive components that we, we found as part of that fire station and decide if the City Council feels that we should proceed along those paths or not, and we can rebid it with those things as, as alternates. And this would also give us a chance to sit back and figure out how, exactly how we're going to fund the extra three-hundred-thousand dollars if we had to go that way.
Well, three-hundred-thousand is well above contingency.
Yeah, it is. That's just, that's, that's a lot.
So I, I-
It puts a little bit of a discomfort into me.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item twelve. Item twelve is consideration of a motion to adopt the attached Richfield Recreation Services Health Food and Beverage Policy for all city-owned park and recreation concession facilities. And I'm just going to read a quick paragraph, and I know that staff would like to talk about this further, so I'm just going to give a quick background. The city of Richfield's been actively participating in the ship, but we heard the Advisory Board of Health earlier about this, and has completed a number of initiatives to improve the community health. Thank you. The city received a number of grants that help support the development out of a comprehensive tobacco ordinance for parks, a revised bike plan, and a satellite farmer's market. Another initiative that is included in the grant work plan is purchasing a new menu boards for all city-owned concession facilities to prominently display healthy food choices in conjunction with the development of a concession policy, and I will let city staff have the mic.
Thank you, mayors. Member of the City Council and our audience, my name is Jim Toppetssofer. I'm the Recreation Services Director. And you're getting some treats handed out to you, which we'll explain. I also sit on the community leadership team for the statewide health improvement program here with the cities of Richfield, Bloomington, and Edina. I am the chair of the group, so I'm no stranger to the accomplishments we've had at ship, and that was one thing that we had on our grant work plan.
Oh, wow.
Is, you know, we wanted to, to promote healthy food choices in our city-owned concession stand. And so the grant that we, we had did two things for us. One, it funded these menu boards, which we were prominently putting the healthy choices on there, and then to actually have, bring forth a policy for you to consider. And that's what we're here for tonight, to introduce the policy to you and carry forward with this. So the first thing that we did was the Community Services Commission found a document that it's in my hand right here. It's called the Smarter Choices Nutrition Guideline, and these are nationally known guidelines that really help you identify what in your concession stand is considered healthy and what isn't. And I want to tell you that when we first started looking at this, we were pretty skeptical, especially the guy that just handed you out the, all the bags, our arena manager. He, he was very reluctant to adopt these healthy guidelines and to really subject the food that he's serving out of his facilities, because, you know, it's our general understanding as staff that healthy food doesn't sell very well and doesn't make a profit, it actually costs you money. And that's been kind of our reference. And so the grant put in place a funding for a consultant that we invited all the facility managers from the three cities in, and this consultant was an expert concession, a person expert at concession profitability, and was able to deliver a great workshop to really help us think beyond the box of how we could really improve our bottom line and still use healthy food. And I think we kind of started turning Brandon around, and we're ready to actually come to you right now and adopt these guidelines, and I, we're going to explain what the guidelines are all about, but let me just tell you how, the, the policy that we have in mind that we think we can really commit to. With these guidelines, we think that we're going to eventually make it so that there are forty percent, all, forty percent of our menu meet the guideline, okay? So in other words, when you go to our concession stands, forty percent of the items that you see on the menu board will be healthy items. And we're going to start out this next year with the concessions that are operated by the city, that would be at our ice arena and our pool. We're going to start out at thirty percent and try to move it up to forty, forty percent in the next couple of years. And then the following year in two thousand fourteen, the remaining concession facilities owned by the facility, by the city are at three parks. There are athletic complexes at Donaldson Park, at Roosevelt Park, and at Lincoln Fields. Those aren't operated by the staff, they're operated by volunteers from our youth sports organizations, the Richfield Girls Softball Organization, RBI, a number of other organizations. And so we're, they've, they're on board too. We've approached them, they're open to this, they're skeptical as well. We're going to be sending them to a training, the same training in, in May, and hopefully they'll feel a little more comfortable about it. So the one thing that's left out of the policy is vending machines. These guidelines, if you look at them, they give a guideline for what is considered a healthy food item in vending machines. But the vending machine industry hasn't caught, hasn't quite caught up to the program because they don't offer enough items to actually meet, you know, it's not feasible for us to get thirty percent right now with the companies that we're familiar with. So we're just going to wait for the industry to catch up before we introduce vending machines into our policy, and at that time, we'll consider maybe even adding City Hall onto that. So what I'd like to do is introduce Joan Balfour to you. Joan is a member of the Bloomington Health Staff and is assigned to our ship grant. Joan's been the one that's been patiently working with us and has been great to work with. She hasn't, she's been, you know, very good at not forcing anything on us, but just allowing us to come to a conclusion on this. And Joan's going to explain a little more about what, what is considered healthy and what isn't as far as these guidelines are concerned.
Thanks, and I'm very happy to be here tonight. This has been an interesting and fun project to work on and really good people to work with as well. When we started the Healthy Concessions Project as part of the statewide health improvement program, our purpose was to increase food and beverage options that would promote a healthier diet. And as part of a healthier diet, we're really trying to promote fruits and vegetables, increased water consumption, foods that are lower in fat, sugar, and sodium, increased whole grains, and also a healthier portion sizes. And to do this, we really needed to give guidance to the concession managers on, well, what, what is a healthy food? And to be perfectly honest with you, I don't use the word healthy food when we talk about concessions, it's just healthier. So concessions, if you think about what you normally would see at concession stands, when we've done some assessments, we're really looking at, especially with food, under five percent of the options being healthy. That's what's traditionally offered at concessions, it's kind of what people expect to see at a concession stand. And so what we're trying to do is move the food choices kind of incrementally towards really healthy foods, but in the middle, we're going to call them healthier than what has traditionally been offered. But we have used guidelines that are based on national standards, and we took, well, there's, there's a number of them, and so I looked at those, we adapted them with input from the concession managers so that our guidelines, our smarter choices guidelines would be realistic, but also keep pushing us towards healthier options. So the, the guidelines are really in two parts. There's the clear-cut, black-and-white nutrient-based criteria that are used to judge, is a food unhealthy or is it in our healthier column? And so the, for example, with foods, they would have to meet six nutrient-based criteria. So for example, the food that's sold, as it is sold in the concession stand, has to be less than two-hundred-and-fifty calories. If it's more than that, then it can't go into that healthier column. And then there's, there's a number of, of criteria that deal with fat, sugar, sodium, and different types of fat. Excuse me. Then, in addition to these really straightforward nutrient-based criteria, we're also looking at giving some recommended practices that the concession managers could use to, again, just keep incrementally moving towards that healthier standard. And so even if a food didn't meet the nutrient-based criteria, we would know that it was at least healthier than would have been offered before. So a good example would be a hot dog. So in the foreseeable future, I don't think any hot dog out there is going to meet all six of those nutrient-based criteria that we use to judge whether food is in that healthier category. But there are hot dogs that are less in calories, less in sodium, and so what we're doing is encouraging the concession managers to look at the products they're offering and see if there isn't one that's at least somewhat healthier than when they're offering right now. And so they can kind of push towards healthier by doing, looking at nutrient quality. The other thing is to look at portion sizes. As Americans, we love things big, and that includes our portion sizes. So again, looking at that hot dog, a concession manager could buy a hot dog that's four hot dogs per pound, five hot dogs per pound, six hot dogs per pound, or seven hot dogs per pounds, obviously getting smaller in each of those categories. And so we're just encouraging again the concession managers to look at, what are you offering now? Can you offer smaller portion size? The other thing is really looking at marketing. So one of the things that Jim mentioned was the menu board. So we're looking at, well, what, what are you doing around price? Healthier foods do tend to be higher priced. And so if we sell a hundred percent fruit juice for three dollars for a cup and sell pop for a dollar, really, are people going to buy the, the fruit juice? No, probably not. But if we start manipulating the prices and subsidizing the healthier products a little bit by increasing the prices on the unhealthy products, then that can work out better and really push and nudge people towards buying the healthier products. Also, the promotion, how do you promote the product? So an example of that would be in another concession stand who had, has, unfortunately, Richfield doesn't have a lot of counter space at, say, the ice arena, but another concession stand we're working for does. So she bought a refrigerated display case to put all of her healthier products in that, like cheese sticks, yogurt, fruit parfaits, fruit cups. They hadn't been selling before, and when she put them in that refrigerated display case, they started just flying off, and huge increase in sales. So we know that promotion works, so we want to give the concession managers all kinds of tools to try to make this work for them and still meet their bottom line of trying to make money with their concession stands. So again, the, the guidelines are there to help the managers move towards healthier options and, but respecting all the while that, that changing food habits is difficult, and that it's going to take time. And so we've tried to make them work for concession managers.
So Brandon's going to explain what's in the bags. They're actually, some of the items we're actually selling that do meet the guidelines.
In your bags, you'll find, and I will, when Joan mentioned the things, the, the facility that's putting items into the display case on the counter, it is one-hundred percent true that any item on the counter, that's why counter space at convenience stores is so valuable to vendors. For instance, the, the beef jerky sticks, the, the Jack links that are in your bags, those do meet our healthier choices guidelines, and those we have on our counter, and those we sell probably two to one to any other item in our facility. And it's, you know, it's so simple that if, if it's out of sight, it's out of mind, where if it's on, it's up front and forefront, people tend to make those decisions. Other items in your bags, and again, these are, when Joan talked about the guidelines for healthier concessions, you know, about the serving size, about the calories per serving, that's what it comes down to. Other items in your bags that meet these guidelines that are on the screen, the, the juicy juice, the licorice, so to speak, those do meet it per serving. The other, there's granola bars in your bags, there's peanuts in your bag, there's water, Powerade Zero. Trying to think what else is in there. Tomato juice, there's Snickers, Marathon Bars in there. All those items do meet the healthier choices guidelines or the smarter choice guidelines that are listed here. All those items, we actually, we cut out, last summer at the pool, we cut out candy, selling candy at the pool. Didn't really hear a lot of comments about it. Again, it was out of sight, it was out of mind. We changed our menu pricing, and we still end up, we, our profit was up, our cost of goods was down, and then for concessions in our ice arena, we also eliminated candy. Didn't really hear anything. We started offering the, my, items in your bags that meet the guidelines. And again, profit is still the same, our cost of goods are down because of the seminar that I attended. So it is working. We're probably, give or take, thirty-five, forty percent at the ice arena that meet these guidelines now, when you take into water, Powerade Zero, the items in your bags, diet soda, juice, the fruit juice that we have there. Coffee does meet that guideline just because of the calories, no fat, and other such items. So it, it is working, it will work. We have some other items that we're going to experiment with at the pool, frozen yogurt that we're going to try. We're going to try, forgot the item already, the frozen yogurt, we're going to try the fruit parfaits, as Joan mentioned, at the other facility, yogurt parfaits with the granola. So we do have a lot of items that we're going to try that should be successful this summer.
They're already looked at, and, you know, when they did that in the schools, we follow the schools, the council was invited over to lunch, and they moved all the fruits and vegetables and the salads all up front, and the kids started to eat them. They ate forty percent more. It was, it's just amazing what a little bit of tools can do, so thanks for, thanks for doing this, too. I think this is real important. We're all going to do a little better if we start eating healthier anyway, we could all use that. Winter's been way too long on us, and we need to get out and get moving, right? Thanks for this great help. Go ahead, council member. How we're doing?
Yes, 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 we can do that.
And are we going to put the council on a healthy diet for their dinners time?
So one point I wanted to make, we're not forcing these healthy items on everyone, we're giving them the choice, and we're, we're giving them, hopefully making it easier to make that healthy choice.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for this hard work, this is great, this is wonderful. At this time, I would make a motion then to adopt the attached Richfield Recreation Services Healthy Food and Beverage Policy for all city-owned park and recreation concession facilities.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're going to be a healthier community. Counsel member Sandal, you have the next item.
Thank you, Your Honor. We interviewed several people today for some of our city commissions, and at this point, I would like to recommend Renee Skinner for the position of Human Rights Commission member with a term expiring January thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, I believe, we discussed that. And then also a student member for the Human Rights Commission, Brittany Jankie, and her term would expire August thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen, when she would be through high school at that point. So I will move those names.
Second. Any discussion? Cheryl, I'm sure we'll get that to you, we, we changed a couple of dates because it was kind of happening, oh, you got them?
Yeah, okay.
Great. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And if I can, Your Honor, I will mention that we still have openings, we have currently two openings in the Advisory Board of Health, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven openings in the Arts Commission, and you don't have to be artistic to join, they're looking for promoters, too. And then the Friendship City, we could use six positions. So we have lots of openings in some really interesting city commissions, if you're interested, you can go on the city website or call City Hall and ask for an application, and we will be interviewing you once you apply.
Thanks. Thanks. City Manager?
Mayor, members of the council, I really don't have any specific report to give this evening.
It's a long legislative session, though, right?
Yeah, you know, I could, I could start commenting on all of that, but it changes pretty rapidly. I will say this, that with respect to the local government aid that we've been, we've been hurt so badly by over the past, heck, probably at least four or five years, it looks like they're turning that around a little bit, and even though we're working our way off of local government aid, the, the formula that's, that's being proposed and is in the House version of the tax bill would give us considerably more local government aid than we've had for quite a long time. And as we wean ourselves off of that, that's, that gives us flexibility to take a look at setting some funds aside for us to be able to deal with some of the capital infrastructure that the city needs to, to work on, and, and doing some of that, maybe without having to go and bond for some of it, or maybe bonding a lesser amount. So I know Chris Bridges and I will be looking at that, and if it comes to pass, and it's passed in the version that we saw it, we'll, we'll have a plan for how we can put that money aside, or most of it, to help us with some capital kinds of issues.
That'd be great. Claims and payroll?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seeing no further actions, I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.